This meeting is being livestreamed over the internet. It is also a digitally-recorded public record. Please identify yourself by name when you speak to the board. Members of the public who wish to make a comment to the board, or any staff members who are providing information to the board, need to do so at the podium. Let me remind you to silence your phones, and if you are intending to make a public comment, fill out a card, please, and give it to Pam over here at the desk. Okay, let's, we'll start by saying the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Jorgensen, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll have Reverend Jason Sharp, he is the pastor at Francis Baptist Church, will lead us in prayer. Thank you for coming.
Yes, ma'am. Let us pray. Most heavenly and gracious Lord Jesus, I thank you, Lord, for this city, Lord, for this county. Lord, I thank you, Lord, for how you're moving here among your churches, Lord, among this organization, this school system. Now ask, Lord, that your hand would just be upon it. Lord, that we lift up these kids, Lord, coming from all different walks of life, where some seem, some seem to struggle, or some seem in other situations, but no matter where they're coming from, Lord, we just pray, Lord, that we love on them. Lord, we equip them to succeed in life. And, Lord, I pray, Lord, you do this, Lord, by equipping the teachers, Lord, and those in administration, Lord, by especially blessing them from your kingdom, Lord, to touch the lives of these students and their families. Lord, we love you, and we thank you for what you're doing. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Jason.
Thank you. Okay, our first presentation today will be by the Veterans Council of St. Augustine, if they would come up. And I think we have two of our librarians.
Yeah, we have, uh...
Media specials.
Media specials? Well...
And Ms. Higgins.
You can't call librarians?
Well, yeah. If you're old.
Well, I'm old.
How's your, um, how's your, um, grandies?
Oh, it's just a cute looking little...
We have Michelle Higginbotham from Crescent City High School. And Lynn, are you at Crescent City High School?
In Orliken.
In Orliken High School. Okay, I was gonna say, when did that happen?
Yeah, I told her.
Both of y'all.
Well, thank you for having us here this afternoon. I'm Bill Dudley. I'm the chairman of the Veterans Council for St. Johns County, and I have with me this afternoon my colleague and our secretary for our Veterans Council, Michael Rothfeld. Just to make a comment about Mr. Rothfeld. Mr. Rothfeld is retired from the New York Board of Education. He was a teacher, a history teacher, for 35 years in, was it Brooklyn? Brooklyn. Brooklyn, teaching history. Michael is not a veteran. However, he probably has more scars than most of our veterans having taught in the New York school system for 35 years. So, he comes with a lot of battle rubbins. But we're happy to be here this afternoon, and the purpose of being here is that we have some videos, some film documentaries, that we would like to present to the Board of Education, to the schools. And these are documentaries that the Veterans Council has produced over the last six-year period of time. There's five of these documentaries. Michael and I have been, are the producers of these documentaries, these videos. And they are videos that depict the life of veterans who have served from our community, starting with World War II, Vietnam, our Korean War veterans, our Vietnam veterans, POWs. And the last video that we did was on Canines for Warriors. And these videos are approximately 28 to 35 minutes of duration. And we have given these videos out essentially all over the country. They're in libraries all over the country. They are in the Pentagon Library System in Washington. And in the Pentagon Library System that they have there, they can be livestreamed all over the world, wherever we have bases all over the world. So, these videos are well-known around the world. And so, we're very proud of them. All of the people who are in these videos are veterans, as I said, who have served from our community, from northeast Florida. Most of them from the St. Johns County area. But we're very proud of this, and this is just one of the things that our Veterans Council in St. Johns County has done over the years. St. Johns County Veterans Council is probably one of the most active Veterans Councils in the state of Florida. And I know this for a fact because I deal with the FDBA over in Tallahassee, and I interface with a lot of the other veterans organizations around the state of Florida. And so, I have firsthand knowledge of the fact that we're very, very active. And I won't go through all the list of things that we do as far as our Veterans Council is concerned this afternoon, but in the interest of time. But one of the things that we started two years ago when we were celebrating our 450th anniversary was we did our first-ever Veterans Day Parade. Now, you would think that a city as old as St. Augustine with 450 years of history, and has the oldest continuation of military presence in the entire country, not the entire state, but the entire country. You would think that they would have had a parade, a military parade sometime during that period of time. But we had the first-ever Veterans Day Parade, and it was so successful that, in celebration of our 450th anniversary, it was so successful that we were asked by our townspeople and by the community, would you continue to do that, you know, on an ongoing basis? So, we did again last year, and we will do it again this year. And we're gonna make that now as a means and a way of celebrating and honoring our veterans on Veterans Day each November the 11th. So, we'll be doing it again. So, I extend to everyone in this room and everyone who's in the viewing audience this afternoon, please come over on November the 11th and participate in our Veterans Day Parade with us as well. But we are here this afternoon, and I would like to thank Dr. Taylor, Diane Taylor, for having us here this afternoon. I'd like to thank the Putnam County Board of Education as well, for all of you for inviting us over this afternoon. And I'd also like to thank the Rotary Club of Palatka for having us here this afternoon. So, with that, I would like to present copies of, yeah, all of the videos that we have.
You wanna take them out?
Yeah.
And just...
That's the best way to do it.
I've got two sets of photos, one with my camera, one with Eric's.
They're open on PBS. I want to clarify. Two churches could talk specifically. Most of the stuff. Yeah, that's why I used that. That's true. That's true.
Time?
Thank you. I thought this was...
Get you in here as well.
Make sure you use my camera. I'm gonna put in this...
Yeah, I'm gonna walk out in a moment. Lord, keep in mind that you are the background. Here we go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
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 I love the way he talks.
I know.
I bet you do.
Thank y'all so much. I'd just like to say, as the daughter of a World War II veteran and the wife of a Marine who did two tours in Vietnam, it is especially meaningful to us. Thank you.
Well, thank him for his service when you see him this afternoon.
I will.
We appreciate it very much.
I will. Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Ms. Linda Myers, who we're always happy to see from the tag office, tax collector's office. Tag office sounds nice, though, doesn't it? Yes.
Yes.
I like the donut lady.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Linda Myers, tax collector, 323 St. Johns Avenue, Palatka. It's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to thank the school board members, Superintendent Searcy, and everybody in the audience, in the viewing audience, the folks who work every day with our children. Thank you for what you do. You're changing our community one child at a time. And I tell you, if you don't hear it often enough, you're appreciated. When your bus drivers come in to get their licenses, we always say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you," for another safe day on the road for our children. Superintendent Searcy, thank you for inviting me. You had the opportunity to participate in a recognition program at Mellon Elementary. And I think you just wanted to share that with your board members as well as let them recognize some of the wonderful students in the audience who participated in a brand-new program. So, if you'll let me just briefly, what I tell the children is, this is about turning your passion into a piece of art. And I say, have you ever seen on the back of a car a specialty tag? It might have a horse on it, it might have a surfer on it, it might be a sunset. Those are somebody's passion that got turned into an official tag. And when you purchase that, you show a visibility of something you believe in. And then, you also spend a little extra money, and that money goes to your passion. So, that's what specialty tags are about. And we have well over 100 at this point in time. So, we invited 5th grade students at different schools to participate in creating their own specialty tag. Now, I believe that Pam may have passed out just a brief statement about the program. If she, it's coming now. It's the kids, it's coming now.
She's passing now.
Please don't worry about reading it, but it's take-home material. It's about the program. It's called Kids' Tag Art. Not new with me, started in Polk County in 2006. Our office, your Tax Factor Office, is pleased to bring it to Putnam County the first year, 2016-2017 school year. What I want to mention to you, first of all, is these tags, if you choose to buy one, and we're hoping every single person in this dais will buy one because it goes back to Mellon Elementary School, the monies from the purchase. It goes on the front of your car. I don't want anybody calling me and saying, "I put it on the back, and the police officer stopped me." So, let's make sure we know. These are not official Florida tags, but these are official Mellon tags. And we had 21 participants, which we recognized at Mellon last week, I believe. And I think that Mr. Searcy has invited the five top winners. So, I think we're going to ask them to come up. But before I do that, I want to say, yes. Pam, pass this out. This is a picture of all 21 tags created by your students. And you'll see there's a URL on the bottom. For $20, you can have this on the front of your car. And of that, approximately $12 goes back to the school. So, it's a really good return to the school. And it also shows the community, when that tag drives around, this is what our children are doing. And I think that's pretty darn special. So, with that, if we could invite up Ms. McCullough and the principal, Ms. Weaver. And I think they will be inviting the students up. I'm not sure I know all the students' names. And while they're coming up, I'm going to pass these tags. I want to remind the school board, you'll get a special invitation. This is what the tags turned into. And I'm gonna pass them down. I'm gonna pick them up over there because these are gonna be on display March 14th for a county-wide. There are numbers of schools that participated, and county-wide, we'll be celebrating all of the students. And so, these tags will be on display. And also, these tags will be traveling around the county. So, if the school board would like them in their, in your foyer at one time, we'll have a little stand for them to travel. With that, Ms. Weaver?
She might have called.
Hi, Libby Weaver, principal of Mellon Elementary School. Before we get started, I would also like to recognize Tiffany Scranton, the assistant principal at Mellon. If you'll come on up too, Tiffany. And I want to say a special thank you to Ms. Michelle McCullough, who was very instrumental in helping this program take off at our school. She did a lot of the legwork with the children. And I would be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to just say publicly what a wonderful asset Tiffany Scranton is to Putnam County School Districts.
One of the best.
You are looking at two of the finest employees, I have no doubt, anywhere in the state of Florida, and you guys are appreciated. When I call your name, if you want to come on up with your tag, we'll start with Ms. Lillian Griffiths. All five of the individuals recognized today have been invited to attend a county-wide ceremony which will be held next month. And Lillian's tag was 5th place at Mellon, but she was also the Seminole Electric winner. So, congratulations, Lillian. We have Zami Vasquez. Zami, if you'll come on up.
Which one is hers?
Zami was our 4th place winner at Mellon Elementary. Our 3rd place winner was Samora Walls. And Samora was with us up until Christmas time, but unfortunately, she's moved out of state. But I'm sure she's doing great things in Virginia now. Our 2nd place winner was Mr. Dustin Hawkins, and Dustin was unable to make it today. He had a previous engagement. But our 1st place winner was Ms. Yemire Pasmore, and she was also the principal's winner.
Oh, my gosh, she's so cute. Which one's yours, honey? Show us yours.
You wanna turn it around for him, Samora?
Which, show us your tag. Oh, that's the one I love. They're all just beautiful.
And one thing I've learned in my very short time at Mellon is these kids are stars for a reason. It's because I can tell you that I have had an opportunity to meet in a positive way every single parent of the parents who are here today. And they didn't get here by themselves. They have wonderful parents who also deserve a round of applause for making it possible for them to be here today.
Kurt, we've got a parent wanting to take a picture back here.
Yeah. Just as long as I'm done, parents can take, okay?
This is wonderful.
Yeah. I worked hard teaching Tiffany when she was a kid in school, so... Taught her everything she knew.
Oh, God, that's scary.
Like I did Nikki.
All right, thank you.
I think I may have taught that little one's mama.
Yes, she did.
Come on up, young lady.
Hey, I want, I want to get one with my camera. These will help them for them.
Bye-bye, Ellen.
This is special. You guys are the ones. They didn't send an apology like this.
I know.
It's ridiculous.
Casey, Casey.
I don't care. Yeah. I'm telling you. I'm right. Yeah, I'm gonna send it. I'm gonna an apology letter on every one of them. Casey, look. This is stupid.
Thank you very much.
So, while Mr. Griffiths is finishing with these fabulous photos, because this is pretty darn special, I do want to thank the school system for allowing us to join you. We'll be doing this next year. And we had one from the public system participate. We hope to have a couple of more. It was probably glad that we only started with a small number. We had a few of the private schools and children's reading centers as well because it was a lot more work than we realized, like anything good is. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, this is at no cost to anybody in the school system. The, every child got markers, the identical markers, so that in competition, they would be the same. They all got templates, and that, and that's when you have to thank your sponsors. So, Seminole Electric helped contribute to this fund, and our major sponsor was Beck Auto Group, who contributed to this as well. So, we do want to make sure people realize this happens because people in our community care. And then, finally, I know you all give us enough money. You don't want to send me money. You already give me enough, I know, as your tax collector. This money actually is handled through the Arts Council of Greater Palatka because it seemed to be a good partnership. They're all about art, and what we're doing is taking our children's art talent and showcasing it. Thank you for the opportunity to be here, and we'll look forward to seeing you on March 14th. It will be at the Larimer Art Center. Again, that kind of made sense. And we're gonna celebrate our children that night.
If you get a chance, if you have a booth at the fair, it'd be nice to set some of that up there.
You know, it certainly is. We are hoping that there'll be an opportunity in the arts side of the equation for that. I agree with you on that respect. And we will have a traveling wall, so we'll keep that in mind for your foyer and others as well. You're gonna get an invitation. I can't remember exactly, but it's right after work, maybe 5:00 or 5:30, something like that. But everyone here will get an invitation. And the parents are all getting invitations as well because this is all about our children and their talents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Myers.
Next, we have Mark Modle from PFTU.
Thank you, Lynn.
Good afternoon, board members and superintendent.
Good afternoon.
Mark Modle, president, Putnam Federation Teachers. How you doing? Hi. I am very excited to announce today that Putnam Federation Teachers and the Florida Education Association, we have Tammy Whitaker here with us today from FEA, along with folks at AFT, we are partnering with an organization called First Book to bring a truckload of books to Putnam County.
Yeah.
Now, truckload, what's a truckload, right? That's a big question. This truckload is gonna be 40,000 high-quality, age 0 to 18 appropriate books.
Wow.
I have a short video I'd like to show you, if you'll indulge me, to kind of give you an idea of what this event will be like.
I can think of 40,000 reasons that we would let you do that.
First Book is an organization that provides free books to communities as well as, once teachers register for First Book, they can get up to 6,000 titles and school supplies at a very reduced rate, some as little as 50%, some up to 95% off. So, it's really important for teachers to register with First Book because they can supply their classrooms. I picked Amakli, Florida, number one because when you say Amakli, everybody says, "Where is that?" Nadine, it's like the forgotten community. And when I was on a listening tour for FEA, going to the priority schools, the schools that the state calls the lowest-under-300-performing schools, which I like to call priority schools, I was very touched by this community and what they had to say. So, bringing 45,000 books to a community of this size and this magnitude is a huge thing for this community, This event is so important to the community. Kids love books, but books are expensive, and they don't all have the resources to get to the public library, to have a small library in their own home, and then be able to trade with their friends. It's just the perfect situation. When my son started at Lake Trafford, I started at Lake Trafford, and he came with me. His first day of school, he got a book, a free book, As a teacher, these books mean that I will be able to read more stories to my students. A lot of the books here are from their favorite characters and shows. A lot of Sofia the First books, Cinderella. There were so many books geared toward boys with Cars movie and Spider-Man. And when you read a new book to a child and see their eyes light up, it is just the best feeling in the world. Our CCEA union does so many wonderful things for teachers, and I would encourage all of teacher unions to get involved with this program and be able to offer these books to their staff and their students. My name is Juanita Martinez. I'm the program director over at the Boys and Girls Club, both campus here in Amakli. And we are part of Boys and Girls Club of Palio County. And over there, I'm in charge of running the program, making sure that we're implementing certain programming, reading. We also have a great library over there, which we were really excited to grab books for. We have an art program, dance studio, music studio, computer labs. And this is gonna help our program so much by giving the books to them. And if you go to our library right now, it really lacks a lot of books. And I was just super excited to come out on my day off and rack up on some books for my kids. Well, I think it's extremely important for me and my kids because, you know, I'm from the community raised here. I left as soon as I graduated. I came back to the community in the beginning of the year. And I came back to this community specifically because I saw the need for better guidance with the kids and the need to push them into the right direction. And this is the right direction, education, being creative. And that's what reading does to them. It allows them to be creative and to learn new things, learn new vocabulary. It allows them to just expand into different worlds. Once they get into a certain book, they get to put themselves and their imagination to scroll with it. We don't get a lot of that anymore because of the electronics, and they just stay stuck on that. And now, this just allows them to get back to the basics. We are so fortunate to have our state organization, FEA, making this possible. We didn't know where to go to get something like this. To have Joanne and Ben and Luke and the rest of our leadership team know where to go and know who needed these books. They traveled around the state, so they knew which communities were the most in need. And Joanne realized that the Amakli community was one of the most in need. And so, she, I don't know what she did. I don't know who here she whispered in, or who here she yelled in, or whose arm she twisted, but we're just thrilled that it came here.
I participated in a conference call yesterday with the folks from AFT, and we are ready to move forward and make an event like this happen in Putnam County before the end of the school year. So, the only thing I'm asking of the school board is your blessing and support. And I'll be meeting with Mr. Searcy, Dr. Searcy, so that we can get the ball rolling. This is not gonna be something that PFT can do on our own, obviously. We'll need the support of the district. That is a big event. And we're gonna need the support of the district and the community as well. And this is a, this is gonna be a great opportunity for us to build that collaboration with the community as well. You know, this is, this is gonna be an all-hands-on-deck kind of thing. And, but we're very excited to make this happen here in Putnam.
It is absolutely wonderful.
Any questions? I could've come up here with some statistics about it, but, you know, I don't think we need all that. You know, it's, I didn't anticipate, I didn't anticipate having anybody say, "Well, I don't know."
Are you thinking of one community, I mean countywide? Are you looking at the west, the south, and then central?
So, that's certainly something to consider. We discussed that in the conference call yesterday. And with the truck coming in, there is an option. They will make two drop-offs. The problem is that those boxes, those big boxes that come off the truck, they're not sorted. And so, you might wind up with boxes full of all high-school-age books And so you might wind up with boxes full of all high-school-age books down in South Putnam if we do that. We did talk about some options, though, of maybe, you know, trucks or vans, maybe taking some books from here and taking them down to South Putnam. We discussed some different options there, because we want to make sure that this is not just a Central Putnam, we want to make sure the west and south are included in this as well.
All the principals are very well-trained in designating people to stack and sort books.
I think that happens over the summer frequently.
And, you know, we do a lot of outreach, the Mobile Food Pantry and the St. Vincent, so we could do a collaboration, have it one day where, at least, South Putnam. So please let me know, and I'll make sure we coordinate that.
All right. Thank you, folks, I appreciate it, and we're going to make this happen.
Please thank your people.
Yeah, thanks a lot.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next on our agenda, we have public comment. We have two, starting with Mr. McKinley Evans.
Time hasn't started until I get started, right?
You are.
No, I'm a press guy when you get all set up.
Actually, there is a policy that says we really don't have to listen if it's pertaining to the same subject that you talked about before, but the board decided prior to the meeting that to go ahead and let you speak even though...
It's not him. This is Mr. Evans is talking about Campbell Building.
Oh, it's somebody else. Okay, let's go. I was advised. Hey, don't tell Josephine, can't you?
I won't tell her. That's my sister.
I know.
She's my buddy. Good evening, and thank y'all for allowing me to speak. What I'm going to speak on is, in the, it was in the Palacan Daily News, January 18th, 2017, that it was approved that the Caldwell Banker commercial benchmark out of Harmon Beach have the, could sell the old Campbell Building, is that correct? And that the contract was approved by the board, but with some stipulation that if you guys wanted to pull that back, you know, and have it for the school or something of that nature, that you could do that. Well, and for one example, you put on there that if the school wanted to pull it back, you know, they could have it for like for pre-kindergarten facility or something of that nature. Well, if you have the kids in mind, my thing is, if you have the kids in mind, that building wasn't good enough for the district offices, then why is it good enough, you know, to try to make it for the kids? To me, you bought this building here, to me, that is deceiving me, myself, as a taxpayer and the other taxpayers, if you decide to go that way. To me, I don't think that is fair to the kids or the taxpayers. So I really just, I don't want to take up much of your time here, I think that's just a clause in there that you all threw in there. These people are out to sell this building, and I think it's a clause for you guys to probably make sure that you sell it to who you want it to be sold to and no one else. That's what I, that's my belief. I don't want you to, I would like for you to look at that very careful. If they come up with a sale, then block that sale and let them get that thing off the tax roll, and so that the taxpayers can get a little relief from that also. We, as a taxpayer, we look and hold the board accountable for the best interest in the kids and also the best interest of the taxpayers' money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Jane, I think it would only be fair if I took, I was the one that wanted the caveat, and it was only, and that was a hypothetical.
Right.
But it was only to be used in case the superintendent were to come up with some type of legislative appropriation, that we could put up a matching amount of money using the building as a match, whatever the appropriation, whether it was federal or that, and he would have that as a tool at his disposal, not necessarily to put kids back in the building.
Right.
But that was a hypothetical, and I made that real clear.
Okay. Next, Mr. Ty Field Senior.
Reverend Ty Field Senior, Mount Oliviamy Church, 115 Pine Street, East Palacan, Florida. I'm coming back before the board because I have a question I want to ask the, what are the findings of your investigation about the situation that I brought before last month? And like I explained to you before, I want to clear my name, because I think it was misused. And so my question to the board is, what are your findings after your investigation?
I'm not, that'd be up to the superintendent. We, I don't know if it's completed or if he's had time to apprise board members, but I certainly haven't seen it.
And I'm no position to talk about that in the board meeting.
Okay.
So my question to you is this. So we're going to keep dragging this out when you've got a man's name that's been out there, that's been dragging around about untruth, and we know it's untruth, because it's been looked up as there's no findings, there's not anything. But it's sad, because, you know, you got, you know, and I think I explained this to you before when I had a meeting in your office, Mr. Searcy. You know, we got people that are willing to, that are willing to go far to help Putnam County, but then you got people that call my phone and say, "Nigger, you need to go back where you come from." "A nigger, who do you think you are?" But we think that's okay, when people speak up about the wrongdoing. And now you got a situation where a man's name is being misused. And we won't investigate it, we won't do, go through the right protocol to make sure this man's name is not used in vain? I don't understand it. And the thing about it is, whatever you investigate, there's nothing to investigate, I told you that before. But like I asked you before in the meeting, I asked you, I say, you know, if you don't want my program in the schools, that's fine. I understand, because my program don't do but help kids, and it's free. But the thing is, I'm talking about my name. And when you got people coming to me, asking, saying different things as far as my name, like, okay, well, we heard you had a situation with a young lady, or we heard you put your hand on a child, no. That's not me. And anybody who knows me, know that's not me. So what I'm asking for the school board, Putnam County, the school board, what I'm asking you to do is, do you do diligence and clear my name? Because there's nothing for you to find. Everything that's out there, I tell it. That's my truth, I tell it. So, but this here is about an incident at a school, come on now. You get, I'm talking about my name. And so all I'm asking y'all to do is just, because I don't think it took long for investigation. So I think an investigation should have been done by now. So now you got a man's name still dangling out there, attached to an incident, to an incident that nobody knows about, an incident that never happened.
Okay. Time, oh, five more seconds.
Do you have a specific person that used the N-word in talking to you?
They called for unknown names and just hung up the phone. But then the last, the last fellow, he came, he spoke his name, he was one of the football player's grandfather. And he told me exactly how he felt. He had been in this several years, he told me exactly how he felt.
Well, I had kids do a lot of prank calls to me and tell my children that I'd been killed in a wreck on the way home over the years and stuff like that. The problem that you run into, Ty, and I'll tell you as a board member, because I don't have access to it, but the superintendent is charged by law with personnel recommendations. And if he, sometimes, he's not bound by law to publicly give an answer to, and Ms. Marvin could help me as well if she needs to, but I went through this for a long time. There are times that you can't, you would like to say things, and you're barred by law from doing that. So I don't know what it is, but I'm certain that he will apprise us at a time. I wish it would have already been done, because I haven't heard anything about it.
Exactly.
But it's not a personnel issue, because you were a volunteer.
Yeah. And we would have to, you know, he may tell us, and we may not be able to share that with you. So that's, that's just the way the law is. It doesn't seem fair, but it's the way.
Okay, so, okay, that's fine. And I'm going to say this, and then I'm going to go on and then, because I think, I think people are dragging their behind parts on this situation. That's what I think, that's my opinion. But an incident happened on Thursday, that's what you say. You say, "Call me on Friday," and say, "Okay, you're no longer allowed in the schools." But then you call me the next week on a Monday, say, "Pastor Fields, how you doing? Oh, I'm doing fine. What date that is you needed for the ravine garden so you can have your banquet for the kids? And so now you're telling me I can't work with the kids, but you're partnering with me again this year to have a banquet for the kids?"
Uh-uh.
Now, I know, I understand, they know exactly who I'm talking to, talking about. So I'm trying to get, I'm trying to understand this thing. So the thing, I'm trying, I'm trying not to waste you guys' time, because what I'm telling you, there's nothing to investigate. There's nothing to investigate. They've looked on the camera, looking at, and even when they, when the first time they put the time out for the accident that's supposed to have happened, I was in Crescent City. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to help you guys out here for a minute. And so that's all I'm asking. And so I've learned when I was in the military to go through the chain of command. So I'm at the top of the chain of command. So now the chain of command is here, I'm asking the chain of command to do something. Because, because I have a, even though I'm not from here, I have a soft spot for Putnam County, because I don't like it when they treat people different kind of ways and treat a county certain different ways because they've had some certain mishaps. But I'm asking for Putnam County and this school panel to get this thing resolved. I'm asking you to get it resolved.
Okay, your time's up now, Mr. Fields.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you, Mr. Searcy, you say we go way back, that's a conversation we had a while back, we go way back. Since we go way back, and we down like four flats, like you said before, then I need you to get this thing taken care of.
Okay, next on our agenda is the consent agenda. I'll start with Ms. Jordinson, do you have anything you would like to pull?
No.
No.
No, ma'am.
No.
And neither do I, so.
The motion that we approve the consent agenda is presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Okay, now let me skip way over to...
One emergency.
Oh, is that next?
Yes.
Let me find it. We have one emergency item, so we'll go out of regular session into emergency session. The emergency item is J1 Personnel allocations, change number 14, 14.4 and 14.5, justification, explanation, principal request to expedite hiring.
Make a motion, we approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion passes. We'll go out of emergency session, back into regular session. Gosh, are we already at?
Report.
Board reports. Who wants to go first? I'll give you the opportunity to respond.
I would like to, I want to say thank you to Mark for doing this partnership, that's an amazing thing. I can't tell you how much that means to, you know, every board member, I'm sure, but just to give the kids the excitement of getting a book to take home, thanks so much, and count us, you know, whatever we need to do to help. I know that even get this guy here, he's got a truck, we will make him drive it and haul books to the dirt roads.
To wherever.
Thanks again.
The county has trucks.
Yes, yeah, we're, it's just great, thank you, Mark, for doing that. Also, the play is this week at Jenkins, I'm excited. My son is going, so I'm going to go with his class to see that, that's exciting. Thanks for all the extra work, again, extracurricular. Literacy Week was awesome, a lot of fun activities around the community, but I just feel like when we get enthusiastic about the fun things that kids get to do and experience above and beyond just sitting in a classroom, when sometimes they get, you know, tired, but they get excited when we have things like free books and Literacy Week and celebration of all the great things going. So thanks again for all the teachers doing that extra work to make these kids get enthusiastic. That's all.
Okay, thank you. What else?
Our retreat was great, thank you for doing that. Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Ms. Gill Yard?
No.
No?
We are leaving this afternoon after the board meeting to go to Howie in the Hills to be trained in budget, and I think it's collective bargaining, yes, so we...
Have fun.
We trust that we'll have a safe trip and come back with some information.
They give out a lot of chocolate, I promise.
They do.
And thanks to CLO for giving Jane and myself the opportunity to read to the students, and they were well behaved, and they were asking questions, and it was fun.
Yes. Mr. Buckles?
We lost a former employee that was a career educator in Putnam County recently, and I did attend her funeral, Ms. Catherine, Sarah Catherine Gibson, and it was quite a send-off for a lady that loved children as much as she did. She had a great impact on my life, even though she worked for me, I felt like I worked with her, and we didn't have more of a boss other than a relationship. She taught my children, and she was just a, and every year, we lose people in our families, and it is, it's one big family when you're in the school system, but that was pretty rough time, and it was a great send-off for Ms. Gibson's life and education and everything else that she accomplished. I would like to congratulate or thank Superintendent Searcy for meeting with the legislative delegation and pursuing, or at least putting in the request for additional funding. It's always a, it's just something you have to do, and you wind up, he'll wind up at times, I've done it, and we all do, you may ride to Tallahassee just to meet somebody for five minutes to ask them a question or try to ask a favor for the district, and it is very perturbingly, but I think it looked like Superintendent represented our needs very, very, very well, and I was very pleased with that. The board workshop, I, you know, I've been through a lot of them, but I found it to be very fun, and you guys really, you guys really played a lot of jokes on me, and that was all...
We did?
Yeah, I like the pipe cleaners you left in my thing from some of the projects we did. Anyway, it was, I think it does help with the relationship, you know, I even saw Kathy smile once in a while, so. It was, it was, it was okay, and I look forward to more of that, and if nothing else, it does help you to communicate in ways that you can maybe get your position across in a way that would benefit the kids, and there's no terrible hard feelings. The end of the year is approaching, I know it's mid-year, but I would request that if the superintendent and principals have any wrecked automobiles, or anyone with Florida Highway Patrol, or anyone, any groups that would come and speak with our high-school graduating seniors, that I've never really had a year where we didn't lose a child during graduation season, or sometime the week or so after, so I think it's really beneficial to give them a little shock and all, and I hope we consider doing that. And my last request for this meeting is, has to do with the upcoming fair and some of the options that I've talked about with Superintendent, and we haven't gone into much detail, but I know Ms. Huff has some really good ideas nailed down for ag and maybe some of our agriculture centers in trying to convert them into more self-sustaining programs, and help in a way that we, you know, it's obviously, it boils down to money, and we just need to, like everything else, get with Ms. Odom and try to pull a rabbit out of a hat. And we do have some, it's going to be really neat, there are a lot of kids with livestock this year at the fair, among other things.
The last week in March.
Jane's usually there buying all the cakes and everything, I don't know. But that's something that we're going to, it's taken longer to get to work on than I thought it would, but we've got a lot of other issues and irons in the fire, but we're getting there. And it's good to have Ms. Marvin here today, I've known her for many years, and I told Mr. Douglas that we were in good, capable hands with her today, so it is a pleasure to have you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles.
And that's it.
Ms. Jordinson?
Well, I'd like to say thank you for printing on two sides of the paper. It's very exciting. Yes, yes. Really, if we can cut out half the cost of paper, what the heck. Also, master board program, I was told to bring it up today to see if we're interested in moving forward with that.
Yeah, we, what do we need to do?
We need to fill out this and get it to Tallahassee, FSBA.
I have the paperwork in my office, I just need y'all to come by and sign it.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we decide the Gainesville or the, which date?
Gainesville.
Okay. May...
May 18th and 19th. No, hold on, 4th and 5th in Gainesville.
May 4th and 5th?
Yes. We don't have any graduations out early, obviously.
No, no.
A lot of banquets, I'm sure, but we should...
Thank you for reminding me, I do need y'all to cut out and sign.
Okay, okay.
May I sign that when I'm signing other papers? Okay, and last but not least, the internal audit, the audit of our internal accounts. If you recall, a few years ago, or a couple of years ago, we hired a board auditor because of the problem that we have with our internal accounts. We have the same problems... We have the same problems year after year after year, and this is no exception. Um, the problems that were pointed out, it says, we've just set it over and over, you know, and we send the same response every year saying what we're gonna do to fix it. But then it's not fixed, and this is the kids' money, this isn't the taxpayers' money, this isn't our money, this is the kids' money that they raise that are on the various campuses. And I don't, I just wanted to say that, I am for a board auditor, of course, but I, I got over, look at your face, what, this is okay with you?
No, I was looking at Mr. Sorensen.
Oh, okay, yeah.
What is it?
It's the internal account audit.
Yes.
Yes, and it's the same.
I've never seen one that didn't have a financial findings.
The same ones every year, over and over and over and over, so that, so that means it's okay?
No ma'am.
Okay. Well, I do think since last year, though, we have put some things in place, haven't we, Shannon and Rhonda, to try to.
Would you like for us to speak briefly about that?
Yes, I would.
Yeah.
Well, I've seen many times when it was easier to, to, to have an audit criticism than spend a million dollars, but it's just.
A million dollars on one?
A million on one.
It's hypothetical, or a hundred thousand, or ten thousand, or, or one thousand.
We did implement last year, um, the visits to the schools and, um, half of this fiscal year, there were no visits and a lot of these findings occurred in that period of time. I don't know that we will ever get it to the point where there's no findings, but it was our office going to the schools that found the shortage of money, found the situation at the one school and, um, got that under control and all of that money was given back. Went in fourteen fifteen, uh, there were thirty-three findings and in fifteen sixteen, it was down to twenty-four and that was with, uh, half a year of us doing that, we're continuing on this whole fiscal year. They will have visits all year long and so we're hoping that it will significantly reduce again, so we are working on it. And, uh, the schools are saying that they love having us come out and audit their accounts, and I believe they're honest about that now. The first few times you walk in the door, oh, what did I do, what did I do, but, um, now, you know, we're getting more calls, we're getting more questions and they really appreciate the time that we're putting into it.
Well, and, you know, it seemed like to me that a lot of them were teachers not turning in their money in a timely manner and.
And you got one person in the office too, and if they don't get the deposit done, a lot, you know, a lot of the findings were, uh, deposit not made within five days, um, so there are a lot of things, but it is getting better every year, we would love to see where there's no findings whatsoever, but with, uh, eighteen schools and varying people, you know, in the positions there and some of them having bookkeepers, some not having bookkeepers, um.
Personnel, not having enough personnel to have all the checks and balances, that would be great if we could have.
Shannon, do you have anything to add? Cause, okay. She's come from both sides of it, cause she came from the auditing firm that used to audit the internal accounts, so she's seen it from that side also, but, uh, I think we've implemented a pretty good program where we're going out there now and, um, and we've got everybody on the same EP system now where we had a variety, you know, every school had their own way they were doing things, some of them even by hand. And we all have access to that EP system so that we can go in on a daily basis and look at, uh, records, so I think that's gonna help also.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you.
Okay, I just have a couple of things. Um, first of all, I want to thank everybody for coming to the retreat, I really had a good time and I think we got a lot accomplished and, um, I think it was good for us to spend that time together where we could kinda talk about whatever we wanted to talk about, without getting in trouble, right? I have had the opportunity for the last several weeks to be involved in, um, directors' reports and I was yesterday, the high school principal reports, uh, that have been given, and I'm telling you, they are really eye openers. It, um, we're doing a lot of great things in this county and, um, I appreciate all the hard work that everyone is doing, um. It was just good to see that information and I, I appreciate that. I had a great time reading at CLO, those kids were absolutely wonderful, they asked great questions, they were so well behaved. Now, I did have to get on to a couple of kids that were out in the hall that, I'm just going to get water, I'm going to the bathroom, I said, you can wait until in between class. And they looked at me like I had fifty heads, but anyway, I told them, the old school teacher was coming out in me.
I get it.
And, um, this county spelling bee, oh my goodness, those, we've got some smart kids in our county and words that I have, didn't even know were in existence. That I had to look up some of them and find the meaning to, but we should be very proud of our students from all of our schools that participated in that. Then the last thing that I want, I've got two things. Um, state archery tournament, Friday at four o'clock at Jenkins Middle School, if you've never been to one of those, you need to go, they, or those kids are just. Press, huh? Three? When did that change?
Three, four, five, six.
Okay, three o'clock, it starts at three, Jenkins Middle School.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's see, one of my granddaughters there shooting.
Yes, that's why I made sure you knew about it. Then the last thing that I want to mention is tonight at Palatka High School at six thirty, there will be a, a, a college recruiting expert is going to be there speaking. Uh, his name is Mike Dunleavy, and for all of you who have students who are athletes and you're interested in this process, this would be a great opportunity for you, six thirty tonight at the Panther Den. And with that, I'm finished. Does our council, does our board attorney have anything she would like to say, Ms. Cindy Marvin?
Well, the scribbles contract for software is on the agenda, um, and I had a couple of comments on that, if you wanna hear them, if you're not, I'll just go home, it's okay, whatever y'all wanna do.
Well, Charlie, did, did y'all talk to Charlie about it?
I've heard about it.
Okay, you can go ahead and mention it for the public.
Yeah.
Okay, um, there, I made a couple proposed corrections or amendments to it, which you can approve or not, whatever you wanna do, but the original contract offer was for three-year term renewable, and I suggested it'd be for one-year renewable, just to give you the flexibility. It also has an exhibit that describes the specifics, but it did not actually give the convenience fee amount, so I asked to have that added, it's four dollars per order.
Right, same as it is at the college.
Yeah, yeah, they use this all over, and I had them correct the, um, choice of law to show Florida law, they had, the heading said Connecticut and it was a little confusing. Other than that, I wanted to, to, um, just touch on the fact that the statute requires that the fees not be greater than the actual cost to produce a report, just for something for y'all to be aware of when you're looking at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for taking care of that.
Madam Chairman, without going any further, I wanted to also mention that between my wife Deborah and I, we now have ten grandchildren.
I was surprised you didn't mention that.
Well, I, I just, you know, it was one of those things that just, I'm still basking.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mrs. Marvin, will you just let the public give them a gist of what scribble does for our, for our students?
Okay, uh, scribbles is a software program that lets people order school records online and there's a four-dollar convenience fee and there's whatever the charges for the records themselves, but it's four dollars for every order, not for every record. It's used in a lot of universities, it's used in a lot of counties in Florida, and it's just a simple economic way to expedite this and I think take some of the burden off school personnel too, maybe.
But I, I'll just say, we get transcripts at the college, I work in records at St. John's River State College, and we get transcripts from scribbles all the time from other county high schools that use this program. So, and then we, we use the same thing at the college, except we use credentials, not scribbles, and it's, it, it just expedites requesting transcripts. Superintendent?
Okay, thank you, and thank you for filling in for Charlie today.
Oh, thanks for doing it.
I just wanna remind the board that we changed the next board meeting from February twenty-first to February twenty-third, so Thursday, I was gonna be in Tallahassee that twenty-first, so. I just wanna remind you of that, and we, we had discussed, uh, having a financial board workshop that prior to that meeting, and, uh, Ms. Odom has asked that we postpone that workshop until the first meeting in March, is that correct? And that'd be at? Right. So in that board workshop, if it's okay with the chairman, um, set that at three o'clock, uh, prior to the first, prior to the three-thirty meeting.
Okay, so the workshop's at three?
Right.
Okay, cause I had more than ten minutes.
Whether.
It's just a real brief?
It's a brief workshop.
Oh, yeah, well, we're gonna do that monthly now.
Right, well, yeah, once monthly, just to go over our expenditures and, just to be as transparent as we can, so that'd be the first meeting in March.
Oh, oh.
Okay, not on the twenty-third, but in March.
Okay.
All right. Uh, just, Mr. Buckles mentioned the fair, we, we talked about today in our leadership meeting about, um, having a fair booth there, possibly for recruiting. You know, we're, we're still looking for bus drivers, always looking for teachers, so we, we're in the process of discussing setting up a booth at the fair. Also, uh, just wanna point out that Governor Scott has designated the month of February as Career and Technical Education Month. And it has a proclamation and outlining the, all the poss, all the advantages of career and technical education. And I do wanna point out that Putnam County takes that very seriously, uh, as a matter of fact, we're in the process of starting a new program, the Industrial Manufacturing Program, that we are partnering with Georgia Pacific and Seminole to, um, train students over the next several years to fill positions at GP, as they have vacancies come up. And we are actually transporting three busloads of students to GP this week, one from each high school, to go on a tour of GP. And that's kind of a new experience, so from those kids, we hope to sign up a number of students for this new course, so that's gonna be a great experience. I just wanna reiterate what Nikki said about our theater production, what really happened when, when the man landed on the moon. And y'all heard from Sonya Gosh, she was here, I think, the last meeting or two, but that is gonna be a great program at, uh, Steve, I mean, at Jim Pignato Theater. And the unique thing about this are the students actually designed the set and have created the set. No adults took part in this like some of the other productions, so I urge you to come out and support that.
And that's at what?
I believe that's at seven, seven o'clock Friday night?
Friday night.
Friday night?
Day two.
And the day, they do have matinees and that's primarily for the.
Students.
Students. So Friday night is the main program. Uh, we are starting our acceleration program district wide, and we have a very comprehensive program where we are offering a number of different acceleration programs at each of our high schools, beginning with the middle schools. And we, we will share that, um, whole diagram with you, it's pretty complicated, but our thing is, we wanna be as equitable as possible and offer as many programs to all of our students district wide. And we are gonna be explaining this to our parents, starting Monday night in Crescent City. I believe at five-thirty at Miller Middle, we're gonna be, uh, we'll have a meeting and explain to parents their options in Crescent City. We are in the process of scheduling the other two meetings for the central and, and the west area, hopefully in the next two weeks, and we'll make that known, but you know, we do wanna have an opportunity to meet with parents, answer questions and explain what our acceleration options are. So just, uh, stay tuned to that. And finally, Thursday night, we will have our first superintendent advisory council meeting, be held in this room at six PM. And that will be for the central area, uh, Mr. Bowling has worked very hard in, um, getting stakeholders to come to that meeting and would invite anyone that wants to come to, um, observe that meeting. And we're gonna be talking about some of the initiatives that we have started, and we also wanna hear from people on the council to see what are some of their concerns about our community and how the school system can do a better job. And we are in the process of scheduling those, I believe we have scheduled the other two meetings, we'll announce that later on, that'd be later in the month of. Can you give me those dates again, the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth?
Twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, uh, twenty-seventh, Anna Locking, twenty-eighth, in Crescent City, both, uh, will be at the high schools and the media center, both at six o'clock.
Okay, thank you, did y'all get those dates?
Now, if, do we have to advertise, oh, I guess, if more than one board member comes.
We will advertise as soon as possible.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, good point. So again, uh, if you know anybody in those areas, please encourage them to come and it's just gonna be an informational session and we, we definitely wanna hear from them. It's an advisory group, so we want them to give us advice, so let them take part in our school system. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Guess that's all. Our meeting is adjourned.